I'll say I don't see the car.
Yeah.
Just move on.
Yeah, I'm just pulling that from here.
It's gonna chew me all, it's going really well.
True, is it a pilot?
You know, that was like basically the first conversation I've ever had with him. He remembers too. Okay, yeah. Wasn't like saying about the Colorado River Basin. I think you should come every day with a problem. He's actually talking every day with a problem.
Every day.
Every day.
So sometimes I was talking to you like, oh, be acting mayor for about a week. So don't shoot anybody, please. Yes, please.
Please don't shoot anybody. Well, I don't want.
Especially not for the next week.
Well, I don't want when I come back to them to start then.
There ain't nobody around in my neighborhood. Both last weekend.
Seven o'clock, so I would like to call the Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022 Longmont Housing Development Board of Commissioners, regular meeting to order. Let's do a roll call. I'll start. Joan Peck, what?
Marshall Martin, Commissioner?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair. Joan Peck, Chair.
Marshall Martin, Commissioner?
Tim Waters, Commissioner?
Peter Yarrow, Commissioner?
Yeah, Rodriguez, Commissioner.
Suzie?
Suzie Delgoferry, Commissioner?
I know. Do you want to stop and go around?
I.
I think we're good.
We're good, okay, yes, then I'll turn it over to the Director of Longmont Housing Development.
Kind of issues. So the first item that we're gonna cover is review preliminary Hearthstone Lodge budget. Kendra Daniels is going to do that. So before Kendra takes it over, I wanted to cover a couple of things on this. So this property is technically under the, is technically under the Longmont Housing Development Corporation. And so there's not an official action that you all have to take on this. But as you will see in the next item, it's an update on LHTC asset transfer update. And so because it's likely that this is a transfer.
Oh, we just, we jumped down to that.
Yes, I did.
No.
Couple of engine.
Skip to a couple.
Yeah.
Points on the agenda. You have revisions, submission of documents.
Ah, okay, I'm sorry.
And it's in public.
So do we have any agenda revisions and submissions of documents?
No.
No, okay.
I'll move approval of the July 5th minutes.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner, water sent by Commissioner Rodriguez. Listen, Peter.
Hi.
Hi. Asher, man, isn't it? Should we just pro forma say you asked the public to be heard? I don't think there's anybody here, but.
Yeah, I'll open it up, just.
Okay, I'll open up the meeting for a public invite to be heard. Is there about anybody in the public that would like to be heard? Seeing that others, public invite to be heard. Now I will turn it over to the executive.
Now we'll get back to, so review preliminary Hearthstone Lodge budget. So one of the things I wanted to say is the Hearthstone and Lodge is currently under Longmont Housing Development Corporation. As you may recall from our conversation, that is a HUD 202 property. And so because it's a 202 property, we have to submit the budget in August. We are bringing it today before the commissioners because while you don't have to take official action on this budget, we wanted you to be aware of it because the asset transfer that we're gonna talk about next will mean that you all will assume this budget once we're able to work with HUD and remove it from the HUD, the 202 program. So this is an informational piece today to make you aware of the budget and why and how we have to submit it.
Can you clarify what the special constraints of the 202 property are?
So a 202 property is usually the owner is HUD and HUD provides advanced money to build the property. So they, if you're not managing the property very correctly, they could take the property back, in essence. They also control the budget. So what that means is you, on an annual basis, give them what you think your expenditures are gonna be, what your increase is, and then what you need as an increase to rent. It's still 30% for all the residents. So if there is an increase in rent, usually it's HUD paying more money into the property, not the residents receiving a rent increase. So what we have to do is by August 14th is when Hearthstone is due and then the Lodge is due in September. You have to do a 30-day comment period when you decide what the increase is gonna be to the public. It's usually not approved until, we didn't actually even get ours approved until February, March of this year. So we were kind of struggling cash lines because HUD was struggling cash lines. They were still trying to find money. We got our approval, but they still hadn't given us our contract. So we weren't getting our money and we weren't getting our increase. So we give it to HUD and they either tell us, we can only give you 4%, like last year, we increased it, but they said, I'm sorry, you got a big increase the prior year, so we can only give you 4%. So where can you make adjustments? So even though we submit it, they may not approve. And so what we wanna do, and there's a lot of inspections that are required. They have to pass REACT. There's just a lot of additional HUD requirements as well as HUD monitoring that occurs. So we wanna switch it to a RAD program, and the RAD program is more like a voucher-based. But what happens in the RAD program is when you convert it, it converts at the rent that is actually on the property at the 202. So if the rent is like, for example, at the Hearthstone, right now, the rent is 580. When we convert to vouchers, it's 580. So I think you would still have to ask for increases every year to increase that budgetary amount in the voucher program.
Because you can't run it for 580.
It's very hard to run it for 580, especially with all the inflation that's about to occur.
Yeah, so when we took over, based on context, there were a lot of things that weren't included in the budget. Landscaping, snow removal, replacements.
Well, and there was, for years, they weren't really asking for the nominal increase. They probably could have every year for nominal increases with utilities and everything like that. They were not requesting increases. When you don't do that, you kind of put yourself in this really tight bubble. And you can't, and you fall behind. And when we took over, we were behind. We were in a negative cash situation and I had all our time paying bills. But we got there and a lot of that was with the city helping with the snow removal that one year, not having those extra costs come in. That helped us get to a cash situation. And now when I go to pay bills, I at least have $20,000, $25,000. Where I was in the hole, I had to pick and choose. And usually, the ones we couldn't pay was LHA reimbursements. So the bills that were paid by LHA were usually, or the management fees were the ones that got held back.
So I mean, if you lose 10 here and a 4% increase, and then when you try to figure that out, that's a pretty big bill to overcome on this one. And so we had to eat a lot of costs in the LHA general fund in order to help kind of cover some of these pieces. So that's all part of the conversion. So Kendra, do you wanna get away on the budget?
So, so basically, right now, the Lodge is set at $593 and the Hearthstone is set at 580. That's their rent. That's what we can work with for the entire year. So we gotta make sure we have hardly any vacancies, you know, to make sure it works. Based on a lot of the inflation, we're looking at probably a 6% increase in salaries. Another thing is snow removal. We tried to budget, but we couldn't. We hadn't got the contract done yet. And so there's gonna be at least a 9K increase in snow removal based on what we saw this year. We had 15 snow events and we're way, you know, we're already over budget for snow on these properties. Property insurance, they're looking at, they've seen 10 to 20% increases. We haven't received that money, so I'm basing it on the 15% increase right now. Hopefully, I'll get those rates this week. Last year, we had to, it increased dramatically, that we had to go back to HUD after we submitted the budget and say, we need to change this budget because our insurance just went hiatus because we had a really big loss at the Lodge due to the fire.
There was a fire in the 40, that never occurred.
We also have, some of our properties were built with one utility meter. And there is an ordinance at the city that it should be on per unit basis. So for the Hearthstone and the Lodge, we're getting charged on one meter, even though we really have 50 units. So there's gonna be, and we didn't request it last year because it already had meant, but we're gonna try to request it this year. And that was like a 10K increase based on the super cost that we should be paying.
Stormwater?
Yeah. Storm, yes, stormwater. So that we should be paying. So that's a big increase. We are looking at on both of these properties, close to a 10% increase. So one's at about $65 additional per unit and the other one's at 63 until I get the insurance in. And then we'll submit those and we'll send it out to, we'll send letters to all of the tenants out there to say, here's what the increase is, here's why we're increasing it. And we'll give kind of a little detailed information about why we're having the increase, but also explain that you're not gonna see an increase. You only see an increase if you're in increases. So HUD will be cushioning that extra money that we need for all of these additional costs that are coming in. Yeah.
Are there any questions among the, that HUD's gonna have sufficient resources to pay the different, or to increase reimbursement or however it's classified for that increase?
I would say, yes, there's probably, I mean, last year, I think they estimate that every property should be around a 4% to 5% increase.
You just said, what percent?
10, around about 10.
So that's a 6% difference.
But, yeah, and I bet you everybody's gonna be coming because everybody's gonna see this inflation with maintenance costs and all across the board. Our gas, that we can estimate it is way out of whack as well, our gas costs, so.
So is the answer to my question that we're not confident that HUD's gonna have sufficient funding to cover the increases?
Yes, I mean, we don't know until we know. And so we have to submit this and then we have to kind of work within the broader, since we're preparing the LHA budget to really start talking about what if and what we do to sort of bridge that gap.
And what if would be relying on the city again to fill the gap?
Or the LHA general fund.
Which will delay the starts on the public floor projects or in the pipeline?
No, that's, it's a different financial mix. This is the general fund budget, similar to the city's general fund budget, where we would just have to kind of really dig in and, you know, you're probably gonna get tired of me saying this over the next month or so. It's sort of a death by 1,000 cuts. We're just gonna have to start struggling to figure out where we can find money if there are anyone to do that.
So where does, where does LHA's general fund get their money, like that resource from?
They get it from all the properties. So the properties pay management fee, LHTC pays a management fee. They also get it from the development revenue. So in the Crispin project, there'll be development revenue coming off of that contract. So basically, it's a management fee, it's kind of.
I have a quick question, please. I know that a lot of the revenue in free LHA specifically is development-based. So as development costs increase, does that bring down the revenue that LHA tends to take from those developments?
So generally, it depends on cash flow. So for example, for Crispin, we had hoped to get a larger chunk of development fee at closing to cover gaps, it shrunk some, but we still have the same arrangement in place. So then we just have to spread it out over the cash flow once the property's operating. So we should get the same amount, it's just how long.
And the general fund is usually about $850,000 a year to manage the, all of the management costs. And we get probably about half of that in income that comes in on a steady basis. So management fees for both the properties and LHTC. And we'll get LHTCs once it, so that would be, that'll be a difference.
Yep.
Yeah, so with that, so when we, we'll talk a little bit about it next. And when we, when we make that shift, then we move their funds into the housing authority to kind of balance out, to balance out your one, with the budget we've had to the development cycle. We have to stay on that cycle on a yearly basis or every two years to make sure that we have that development revenue coming in to bridge the gap on the budget.
So worst-case scenario, if HUD doesn't come up with the amount of money, the 6% gap, is that, does that come out of our budgeting process this year? Then do we, as we go through the budgeting process, do we need to hold back in case we don't get the money from HUD or funding some things?
Yeah, we'll have to when we build the LHA budget, which will come to you in November, have to hold some things. So it's available if we're not able to make cuts. Now, you can also look at operational adjustments as well. So, you know, if we're not able to hit the difference in the snow removal, how do we augment snow removal with existing city resources to sort of minimize, you know, that cost component into the Lodge and the Hearthstone? We may have to look at, you know, some of the management fees and say, you know, can we get a 10% production management fee or how do we store 10%? So we're literally gonna have to look at every line item and then look at the general fund to build that contingency so we can deliver here.
I guess my question was, our budgeting process usually begins in October. And if we are not going to know until November, we don't have the ability to not fund certain projects?
Sorry, separate budgeting process. So what we're talking about is the housing authority budgeting process, which that will really be in November. That is separate in part from the city's budgeting process. So we should hopefully have an indication by that point so that we can make the appropriate adjustments.
Is it fair to assume that housing authorities across the country are gonna face the same shortcomings in funding from HUD?
Typically, yeah, I mean, it's like CBG funding when they say, here's how much money we have, and it sort of ebbs and flows with the revenue that they're bringing in. And so with the inflationary pressures that we're, that everyone's seeing right now, I think everyone's gonna come to the table. It wouldn't surprise me to see everyone asking for a 10%, a 7% to 10% increase just because of the inflationary pressures.
So, I just need to finish.
It's okay.
So billions of dollars of argument funds. And I don't suppose from the infrastructure bill that there would be money necessarily for this kind of housing supplement or had to HUD's budget. But, I mean, we've got trillions of dollars moving, right? And HUD, that is underfunded? Are we communicating that, I guess, to our congressional delegation? That seems outrageous to me, with all the concerns about housing, that HUD gets shorted, not anticipating what's gonna happen with housing authorities across the country? And that doesn't make any sense. I understand there's politics, but it doesn't make any sense at all.
I would also probably say they also look at, how are you spending it? If HUD's not spending their dollars, they may take away dollars, which limits what they can actually get out that year as well.
So tacking onto that, we know that because of ARPA and other CARES Act and all of the sources out there, there are voucher programs coming available that housing authorities are wondering, how are we going to be able to? We can access that funds, but it's hard to use because it trickles down to the rest of their voucher programs. And if people have a hard time finding a place that will take a voucher, then they can't use it. So if there's all the funding out there, but it's still difficult to use, that trickles down. But at the same time, what we are thinking on our CDBG side is because there's all that funding out there, going, well, we'll reduce the CDBG program because you have other things out there to use. That doesn't necessarily equate apples to apples, but that could be something that is going on where there's other resources. They expect people to tap those out first before they start increasing typical budgets.
I think the other thing too is you think about this component of the HUD program as what we look at in our budget is ongoing funds. And think about things like ARPA, CBG, the ARC as one-time funds. And so they're definitely looking at it different in that we're injecting all of this money into ARPA, but it is essentially for a one-time purpose. And so kind of like when we look at our budget, you don't wanna take one-time dollars and dump it into ongoing because you're just creating another problem that you have to deal with. I think that's part of it too. It's how Congress allocates the dollars.
Yes, right, so two questions. One is, are we under more pressure than the average Manoa housing authority? Because we did have those, that string of years where we didn't get our nominal increases out of HUD because we didn't ask for it. And how late is the LHA general fund?
We have resources right now with the development costs coming in. And there's even a development savings account that we could dip into, like for this next coming year, but it's gonna be the years after, you know, like Molly was saying, we have this budget for the developer fees, but we don't exactly know when those are gonna hit. Especially when it comes to, you can probably dictate where the cash developer fees are gonna come in because those are usually based on construction and progress of the project. But once it comes to the deferred developer fees, those are usually on cash flow. And if the business isn't having cash flow for a while, you're not gonna see those developer fees right away. So that's just, I mean, the Suites actually owes LHA like about $600,000 since their project. And we have, we started this last, these last two years, we've been able to pay some of those developer fees, but it's not, you know, 75,000, it's 100,000, it's not, it's not a big chunk at one time.
And the general fund?
300,000, I think it is.
Eight, well, right now, we have. A lot of it actually, a lot of, so we have about 2.5 million, I think, in the bank, but I think a lot of that cash is in the Sunset land property.
So it's allocated?
So it's allocated, yeah, so.
Commissioner Hidalgo Ferry, can you see us now?
Yes, I can. It was like if someone turned off the video?
Interesting.
Yeah, it did it automatically.
Did that, sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you.
So to tap onto Commissioner Martin's question, pardon, Commissioner Martin's question. So you said that we currently, you said we had about $25,000 available at Hearthstone Lodge budgets compared to negative before. So do you think that brought us to a good place currently? Or are we still digging our way out from the prior year's practice?
Oh, no, we're in a good spot right now.
Yeah, we're.
And if they choose to give us the increase for snow removal, and we only have three snow runs next year, we'll have a little cushion. So it's, you know, I mean, we could have 17 snow runs and then we're gonna be over budget. So it's, it's a little hard. And that's where they may say, we're not gonna allow this increase because a lot of what they do too is they, when you submit the budget, they make you put what your audit was. We don't have any snow in our last audit because the city took care of it. And it was something that.
You didn't have the money.
So he may ask me to show the expenses and we did actually get released. We don't have to submit our financials anymore, so that's a good thing. We had to do that when they did the MRR audit. But it doesn't think they're coming back in for another one. We just haven't gotten noticed yet.
Your question marks all over the place.
I'm gonna totally convert it out of the 202.
What's the rate, like, I know the vacancy report's coming a little later. You talked about vacancy as an issue. So what is the currency, current vacancy rate, much less the opportunity to flip it? As to how fast can you flip that vacancy rate? Because it seems to me it'd be easier as long as you don't have to mediate, you know, say meth or anything like that.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're finding this year, why the vacancy rates are higher, is one, the meth units that, I mean, obviously, the Hearthstone and the Lodge don't have that issue yet. But the meth units that have to be cleaned, those are extending it. And what we're finding is, you know, there's a lot of people this year that have actually passed away. And when that happens, you don't get the notice. You know, so you don't, you don't get the time that you would normally do if somebody was actually just leaving or going someplace, they get a 30 days notice. You can get prepped, you can get somebody in there. So then that person moves out, you know, we're set to go. That's not usually the case.
Especially in.
Yeah, it depends. I mean, even outside of meth remediation, I mean, sometimes you have other remediation you have to go through. So we have one unit there that we can get the smells out, and so.
We have flooring. Yeah, I understand. I'm hearing the business.
Yeah.
So I was just curious, so what is the vacancy rate that is troublesome?
It's 98% for Hearthstone and 96% for Lodge. So that's only a total of three units available out of 100.
Yeah, and they will, they will only like budget for no more than what was in the audit prior year. So if we have a good year, then we can reduce it. So if we have a bad year, I can increase it to kind of get, so if I increase it.
I said, the demand is there, right? And so it's really about our ability to flip these units more than the demand issue.
Yeah, and to make sure that we have our waitlist. Because I know they did just have to go out again for the waitlist for the Hearthstone and Lodge to make sure we have people ready to go.
Anything else on this? Want to do?
Yeah.
Are we good?
Okay. Suzie, are you all good with this Hearthstone?
Uh, yeah.
And Lodge budget? Okay, let's call on the LHTC asset transfer.
So Commissioner Hidalgo Ferry, your screen should be sharing there, if you can see it, real zoom. Everybody has this in their packet as well, if it's hard to see.
I see it, thank you, miss.
Okay, just to give an update on where we are with the LHTC asset transfer. So this is an updated schedule. The last schedule we went over was from, I think, just the end of the first quarter of this year. So the Crispin 2 closing was a critical milestone because we were working out the structure, the entity structure that would be most advantageous for our future exit taxes on some of these properties. It all played off of Crispin 2 because we did a lot of work with the attorney there that is representing LHTC in this transfer and also happened to be on that Crispin 2 project. So we were trying to model that. So since that closed in the end of June, we're taking the next steps. So Crispin 1, what you'll see on this schedule, this is really more like the first steps. So Crispin one, what you'll see on this schedule, this is really more like the first steps. And then once the attorneys complete some of these restructure planning, research steps, then we'll have more concrete steps coming after that. But the Crispin one, we're in that phase at this point where they're taking that model from Crispin two and, and seeing how that needs to be customized for Crispin one to do an asset transfer there and plan that into the, to the exit plan. For Village Place, so this one, we were originally going to just wait for the resuscitation of the tax credits to make the transfer at that time. But we have delayed that slightly, which we've gone over with you all before for various reasons that make the most sense. And so we're going to try and push this one up and just do a, an asset transfer ahead of time. And then it wouldn't get tied up in the resuscitation. So what we've done is hired the attorney for the resuscitation, which happens to be the same attorney firm that's doing the LHDC transfer work. And so we've got that, we're getting their letter of engagement, contract essentially signed here in the next week. And they've dug, started digging in already. So we're getting a plan in place for this one. Primarily, it's just going to be, this was a, an interesting deal when it was done back in 2005. So there's, there's some moving pieces and so we're getting them started so that they can really research those and make sure we're doing everything in the smoothest way possible.
So there's some interesting quirks in this. I know some of you all have had questions regarding the Center for People with Disabilities and getting their lease. We're trying, that building, we're trying to figure out. Because when you look at the, the way that this was done in 2005, it was part of the deal. When you look at it on the tax roll now, it's actually separated from the property and under the law, my housing authorities name for the tax purpose. But we think it's still connected to the CHAFA funding. And so we're, we're essentially having to go in and really try to dig into figuring out where does that building sit? Because it's not clear how that was done in 2005. Some documents say it's part of it, some documents say it's not. And so when we're ready to resuscitate, what we're going to try to do is untether those two properties from each other. So we have more opportunities to then have a looking structure of some of these agreements.
And if we have the opportunity to do that ahead of the actual resuscitation, that would be ideal just to keep the property separate as we do the asset transfer. So we'll see what we can get done there. And then the Hoover Land is the next one, an LHDC held property. So this one was purchased in 2014 by LHDC using the City of Longmont Affordable Housing Fund loan. So that was purchased for $800,000 back then. So we're, we're figuring out what makes the most sense since we're applying ARPA funds to that land as well, or to the property, I should say, to build family units. So we're working out what really makes the most sense. And right now, what we're talking about is perhaps the ARPA funds that we have tagged for that property go towards the land sale and then they can pay back the Affordable Housing Fund and then that will make me get reinvested. So this might be really a simple one, but we're just sorting out what makes the most sense from the financing side.
So on the Hoover project, I think we'll talk about it later. So we're, we're going to talk about it later.
Um, we can in general development updates, but.
But anyway, so we have an RFQ out, or going out for that project. To developers.
Yes. Uh, so for the Hearthstone Lodge, so the first steps that we had to do to explore the 202 exit is to get a capital needs assessment to ensure that there wasn't anything greatly wrong with the buildings that we couldn't handle in the replacement reserve. So we needed to be able to demonstrate that first. So we've done that. We are finalizing it right now. There, there was some things that we had to circle back to, to make sure that, that it was correctly reported in terms of the issue with the trim that was installed on the building. But anyways, we're finalizing that. We will then have that available when we talk to HUD about the process to get out. We'll have the first step completed. With that, the capital needs assessment did identify a good sized need for the parking lot based on ADA requirements. So rather than using the replacement reserves for that, we, LHA went ahead and applied to the city for the CDBG funds. So we're taking care of that that way with a great fund. So it will kind of try to kick these things off to make the property in really good shape to have a smooth transfer when they look at the assets. So next up is we have to have our, the attorney that's representing LHDC for this effort. They're going to research some of our past documents and we just really have to start taking the steps with the 202 exit. According to the attorneys, this is, you do need HUD approvals and such, but as long as we meet the requirements, we meet the requirements. And it should actually be a relatively simple deep transfer, so they say right now. So we'll make it on that. But we're going to start digging in and we'll know more detail.
And kind of just to give you a sense of the minutia, so we had to do the capital assessment on this. And Molly mentioned the window trim. So apparently, is it the lodge they did right?
Uh, Hearthstone was right.
Hearthstone they did right with the correct window trim. The lodge they didn't construct right with the window trim. So then we have to figure out how to deal with the window trim in terms of the capital cost of this. And I think it's metal versus vinyl.
It's a fiber cement board or something else and it's, it's a, it's a potential drainage problem. We don't, we want to take care of it before it causes leaky windows and such, so.
Just giving you a sense of the minutia you get into in this.
So on, on this project, Molly made reference to the LHDC attorney. So how many different attorneys or law, I assume we have attorneys involved in all these? Same counsel on all these acceptance rooms?
No, same, same counsel across all of them.
All right. So the LHDC attorney is the same firm or the same attorney doing the due diligence or the research on all of these budgets?
Correct. They were hired specifically to do, look at this asset transfer.
And had they worked with LHA?
Oh, yes.
This is an unnamed firm. They worked with LHA or LHDC?
It's Paul Smith and.
Yeah, Brian Cave Associates.
Brian Cave.
So Ben Doyle and Paul Smith are the two contacts that we mainly work with and they have a ton of experience in housing coordination with LHA.
You remember, I remember when they first started stepping into the transition, Ben Doyle was the one that Eugene was talking to. Because Ben Doyle is the county attorney that worked for the county when they went through this similar transition.
Um, so then the last property, properties under the LHDC portfolio are Spring Creek and Fall River. They're going to go on parallel processes and this is the one that they're working on right now because they think this is going to be one of the simplest ones to transfer, what both of them should say, the simplest to transfer. So they're working on this one first off. We primarily just need to get investor approval and it's, it's not too big of a headache according to anticipate.
So I have a question for, back to Village Place. Are we anticipating on renewing the lease with, since we're people with disabilities? Because I know that's email, you see, and they want to be secure and feel confident that they can renew the lease. Of course, they eventually would love to purchase that property and we know that it's the way it is right now. So I think they kind of want to be, they don't want to start looking for another place. So, so we do know for a fact that we will be renewing that.
Yeah, I don't see any issues. It's our plans to renew it.
We just have to look at the timelines for the renewal compared to when we're ready to hopefully sell property as Nico's line up hopefully.
So just as a recap, are all of these 202s or just the ones?
Hearthstone.
Just the one.
Is it, is it fair to assume that the investors will be pleased to see this transfer or, or not? Molly commented that that shouldn't be an issue.
It, it's primarily not an issue because it doesn't really affect them financially. Um, I don't, it's still LHA staff managing the properties. So there, nothing, nothing would change in terms of how the properties are delivered, how their cash flow goes. So it really is just more of a non-issue.
I think if there's anything, I think what you saw in the audits and how you.
That's what I would assume. If there's way more stability and way more consistency.
Right, I think those all, I think if there was a question on, like within kind of later issue, if there's a question on stability and being able to do this in perpetuity, I think that's a conversation.
Okay, let me finish with that report. Um, so the next one is the Sunset purpose for housing.
Okay, so I believe that we were, you're aware that we've gotten the nine percent tax credits awarded. We turned around from the Crispin closing on June 24th and on the next business day, we were doing the Sunset kickoff. So I call it Sunset. The name is being changed. This is the Sunset Campus, is what we say. And so it will be something associated with the Sunset Campus. But that, that is, so when I say Sunset, you know, it's been referred to Sunset Heights, Element, Bluebird. It's had names in the past.
But it's not going to be Bluebird.
It's not going to be Bluebird.
Oh, good.
So that is, we're, we're doing a group process right now to nail that to. And what we're thinking is trying to make something that could tie it to the campus for future development on the backside of the suites, potentially renaming the suites to something that makes more sense with the campus. If we, there'll be some steps to jump through with that, but trying to think long-term. So this is the conceptual plan that was presented by the architects about a week ago for the new permanent supportive housing development. So here's the existing suites building. Currently, this is all parking lot. If you've been out there recently, recall. So it'll be here on the corner. This over here is the back of the Sam's Club parking lot, just for reference. And so there's going to be, parking is going to swap to over here. And this is our four-story building. Okay, so here is a rendering from the main entry, looking from the north side. We'll go into.
Misregard to Bluebird or what?
Yeah, yeah, it's not Bluebird. But the idea is that they would like it to be this general look, which we all agreed looks pretty great and meshed okay with the suites next door and having community murals on the larger faces of the building. And then imagine a mural on this side. They didn't have time to, to put an image on. But this is just looking from the other end. Another perspective view. Here's the materials. I can't give you much detail about what those materials exactly are. I know that's snucco on the left, but that's the general materials and colors. Okay, so this is a, we did a lot of work as a group on this. So this is the main common area, the lobby and offices and common space on the first floor. This is the trauma-informed design. So there's a lot of aspects of this that are very specifically thought out for people that have trauma, history of trauma. It's sightlines, it is having private reading notes, it's having entry and exit doors in view. It's making sure that the, even like the mailboxes have viewing from the property management desk. And there's a lot of things that go into this, making sure that the laundry, we have soundproofing if there's case management offices on the other side of the laundry wall. A lot of detail going into this, this piece of design. And stop me if you have any questions or we can circle back at the end.
So to give you, I mean, so I'll kind of stand up and I'm not as easy as you. So multi-family room here. You see the laundry right there in that location and maybe drive, well, so Sis, you can see this. This actually is the piece of what the architects were looking at when they say trauma-informed design and individuals that were housing. Instead of having laundry on the other floors where it's sort of isolated, it's in an area that's more open and accessible where people can see it. Same with all of this sitting area in the sense that you can see from the offices in this location. We did make changes here. So at one point, the restrooms were here and we had offices here. We said, look, when we're meeting, when caseworkers are meeting with folks, we know from the suites that there's anxiety about people that can hear. And so they switched the restrooms here, moved this here. You know, we're going to talk about some kind of door or something we need to put in there to really kind of keep that privacy. But then, I mean, it got to the, to the level we talked about is a TV. Because people that, you know, live in multifamily units may, they want to have a TV so they can watch the Super Bowl with each other and you can do this. And so that's kind of the level of design that we're getting into.
This is all on the main floor?
Uh-uh.
Yes.
I just have to say I'm impressed with how, how seriously you're taking this as far as back to this is. Uh, please, Molly.
Um, yeah, is, is that the, the laundry area open so that the sounds from the laundry area will come in here?
Yeah, it's more that there's a lot of, in properties like this, sometimes folks don't like to use laundry that's upstairs tucked away, shut away and one door and it's empty. If you, if you're encountering another person that gives you anxiety for any reason, that is challenging. So it's more trying to be.
Maybe glass door, I mean, you can see the double doors there, so they may be glass doors, but we talked about soundproofing.
Yeah, because I, in that, that slanted area, I, I wasn't clear on whether that wall goes all the way to the top or.
Yeah, we have some, we have some images that we want to share with you.
This is the same thing, just looking at it from a different way. It's not be better looked at on the screen at home. So here is, here is that area. So this is looking from that, the far wall into the common table space and into the common kitchen area. So that's a half wall of the kitchen. You can see that the wall that you're thinking about is right behind it. So I think we do have another picture of that, I mean, oh. The reading note picture.
It's, it's behind that white wall with the, like the. You're just behind.
Slanted windows.
Yes.
It's behind this.
That makes sense. So this is, this is a full wall because these are reading notes actually right here. We have seen a picture of the reading notes somewhere, but it was not there in this presentation. And so that is a full wall to the laundry room. And then it's half walls at the kitchens. You can see here's the, the reception desk and full sightlines all the way through the common space.
I think it makes sense because doing laundry is at least a half an hour to an hour. And, and this way they don't have to be stuck in the laundromat, which can be very.
You can keep an eye, so a lot of it is security about your belongings.
Right.
You can keep an eye on your belongings, but still be in a common space.
Yeah, I love it.
I'm so glad you explained all this because when I was looking at it, I was like, this is so odd. This is so weird. So, but it all makes sense and, and I appreciate being intentional about the, you know, with the residents and their security and their anxiety. And I definitely get the part of the laundry room, who wants to be stuck in the laundry room? Someone comes in there, you know, light and.
Kick it out.
Yeah, and feel horrible, yeah.
Some people, the, what's in that, in that washing machine is what they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so this is permanent supportive. In permanent supportive, a lot of times we're moving people really for being unhoused. This may be their first shelter in a while or their first home. And so, I mean, understand what you deal with, the protection of your belongings and uncertainty, not wanting to leave it. It's a, it's a really important thing that we see.
This architect has a lot of trauma from designing this, so.
Carol, at some point, or Molly, it would be helpful, I don't know if there's a glossary of terms or just a couple, but to give a real clear, to codify a real clear definition of permanent supportive housing is going to be on.
Okay, I think we did say that.
It, you make sure it's included enough.
So permanent supportive housing, just sort of what it here does is generally thirty percent AMI load. And in that, you're providing resources to individuals. So if you partner with mental health partners in terms of mental health resources, they don't have to use them. Those resources are available too. And as we get through this, we're going to talk a little bit more about resources and kind of another thing that we're trying to figure out associated with this project. Can we keep going?
Uh, so this is just the unit layout. So this is that first floor. So you can see that common. So this is just the unit layout, so this is that first floor, so you can see that common area that we were focusing on before. And then each of, this is fifty-five units, they're all one bedrooms, so this is, shows the rest of it. We don't have any renderings of an inside of a unit yet. Again, this was just a concept, just to get our juices flowing. And really nailing down the common spaces was the first priority.
Can you take us to the overview? So, so one of the things that we're working at in this, no, the, the side panel. So one of the things when we look at this that we were talking about is we also know that one of the most significant issues that we deal with in our property subjects. And, and so when we were talking about it, I had the opportunity, we've had the opportunity to get some, engage in some conversations with Recovery Cafe, because, you know, one of the things they're doing is working with individuals coming through this. We knew that they've had clients that have stayed in LHA properties. We knew they were looking for office space, meeting space and some other things. And if you remember, we put in one point, why?
One point, for this, one point three.
One point three, three million of ARCO. So we put one point three million in, and the intent of that was if we didn't get the nine percent tax credits, we were gonna be able to use that one point three million to essentially create a nine percent deal on a four percent non抵税 tax credit. What we're trying to do, when we're starting the conversations with them, Recovery Cafe, about their location here, either, the financing starts getting pretty specific is what you can do. So if we can do something and we can connect it, a structure to the existing suites, then we have more resources available to us so that you can have a location or we can do some of the one point three. So understanding inflation, if we said we may wanna hold half a million dollars to, to manage gaps that come into this project and we have eight hundred thousand, we can use the partner, Recovery Cafe, but really brings another level of services adjacent to this fully supported pro, properties. I think that's something that would really actually help us in the issues that we're managing. And then we talked about exploring the concept of Silverwood before. Because we see that that's something that we encounter in our properties as well, where folks wanna be around other individuals who are committed to Silverwood, and so we're trying to work all of these issues out.
How long do we have to spend those applications?
Twenty, we have to have them obligated by twenty twenty-four.
And spent by twenty twenty-six. And then we have CDBG CB funds, the city, not me, the city of LHA, that we are, we have been spending on utility billing assistance. We might need to accelerate because we have a tighter timeline to spend a portion of those, so we're looking to see if we can use that for Recovery Cafe as well. And if so, City Council will see that as an amendment to that.
The reason I bring this up, because this is something we've been exploring, wanted to get your thoughts on this. But we really think it's a way to bring services to, you know, our facilities without necessarily absorbing the ongoing process of services. And so if Council has any, if the Commissioners have any support with that, please let us know.
This, this is a concept I've talked to you about earlier, this campus, for services so that people who need them don't have to wander all over the place looking for where they can find them. So I, I think it's a great idea, and the more we can incorporate that, other services, at some point, will be great.
So what does this really mean for the Recovery Cafe? Do they have premises in this complex?
So currently, in the suites, so, no, this is shadow, so this is actually outdoor space in this dark area. But in the suites, right about here, there's an old commercial kitchen. They need a commercial kitchen and, well, they, they would like a commercial kitchen in their, in their ideal space so that they can teach people skills to be baristas, because restaurant service for some of the people that they serve is a great option, but the evening restaurant service is not so great of an option. So coffee shop is similar, but morning is less.
Dry.
So we have an underutilized space. We also have, this was the old swimming pool from when this was a hotel, that's been filled in. And so this, we have so much outdoor space at the suites that we could designate a piece of it to do an extension off of that commercial kitchen and give them the space that they need. So they have some pro bono architecture work going on right now to see what that would look like. We're doing a couple things on our side related to looking at the property to see if this is feasible.
These citizens really love that.
It's, it's, it's transit to this as a destination for the patrons of the Recovery?
Yes, that was one of their must-haves. And so this is fire department access here, but it's, it's just a, it's gonna just be a, a fire gate down. So you could, there's gonna be pedestrian access and sidewalk, actually. So this is the Sam's Club, so all they have to do is walk this ring road to the transit right up the corner over there. And I think, I don't know, they could get down to, down over and then down at.
So, since you're correct, you're correct.
Any comments or any other additions?
The only comment I would make is I think that, I'm in the, go through these slides, I think slide nine, that layout is probably your initial layout, doesn't reflect that layout.
Right, so this, we made, they made changes within about a day, a business day of us chatting, so we dropped that into here, but then they had not yet updated this one yet, so yeah, that's correct.
Just if it goes outside this room, it might wanna have, be the same.
Right.
Sis, do you have any comments or that you would like to make?
No, no, it looks great and I really appreciate the thought and care, so we did too, the design for people with trauma. So I, I really, I, I'm glad that you all thought of that.
So you all gave us a bill of six properties. One's under construction, one's under construction, one's now moving down to Zod, I think we're anticipating going into, in time, it's, it's October.
Yes, and closing by next May.
And understand, closing is fluid, as we all learned from Christmas, as you're trying to manage this. But, so I think we're actually a little ahead of what we thought we could be on this one.
Yeah, and, you know, every, every project is so different. This has its own interesting, you know, ownership, where we're not closing on the property at the same time as the rest of financing, so.
Right. When do you think, are you planning on having this finished in twenty twenty-three?
Construction will start right after closing in May, so it should be a year.
It should be a month. Okay. Right. So is that it for the Sunset Bluebird Element property?
Yeah, it's not gonna be Bluebird. I said, part of it was, I mean, it's amazing and we're not good at names. I said, you know, there's a lot of flowers that you can choose from that are native to Colorado that make a lot more sense. And part of it was a Bluebird Boulder, they wanted to name it Bluebird Lawnmark. I'm like, yeah, no, we're not gonna do the same name, so.
Even eventually, they said, yeah, we're confusing ourselves, actually, so it's too confusing for Jaffa.
Yeah.
Straight, so.
So we're on to your report, Harold?
Yeah, so one of the things I wanted to do is you, you obviously have seen a number of the folks that have been part of this from sort of the core team that, you know, we had Kathy, Karen, Kim from Raleigh, a lot of folks, but somebody you haven't seen, that has been frankly an integral part of everything that we've been doing in terms of the work with the Housing Authority and really working on quality of life issues, resident issues, accountability, it's actually Sarah Parkin. So what you may not realize in this process is every Friday, we have a meeting. And Lisa wanted to be here tonight, and she says, I don't know the weather, can't be here. And, and so Lisa and Sarah talk daily, but every Friday, we go into a meeting at nine o'clock, nine thirty, you know. And so it's all of us in here, and we're really downloading on the things that we've had to deal with over the last week, whether there's calls for service, you know, wellness checks, problem tenants, all of these issues. Every Friday, we're getting a download and we're working through these issues real time. I wanted Sarah to come here because Sarah, actually, out of all of us, has had the unique ability to see this from OHA, pre-Evangelion and early Michael to kind of this transition. And Sarah has been downloading this, downloading all the conversations of, here's what you can improve, here's what you can't improve. And I thought it would be really good for the Commissioners to hear from her, to kind of give you a perspective of, of the evolution that we've gone through. We haven't talked about what she's gonna say, I want her to be completely candid on this one, so Sarah, take you away.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Commissioners, for having me tonight. To give you a little background, so I brought our Crime Free Housing Program to the city of Longmont in two thousand ten. That is an international program based out of Arizona, working, and the gist of it is working with property managers, owners and residents to make a much better quality of life for folks and it's really about partnership and communication and sharing of information. So when I came to Longmont, I saw a big, a huge gap in the amount of times police were at these heart communities. And it was blessed, here we are, I can be quite honest with you, I don't think I'd be doing this for as long as I have, but I have, I have a passion for this and really residents, I, I guess they connect with me, get away, and then the whole housing industry, I find quite interesting. So that, that's a scoop on, on my involvement, but I've been working with LHA since two thousand ten. They're one of our first, I would call, partnerships. And so going back in my memory, and so that's a lot, with all of the, we have two hundred and thirty properties right now in Longmont, and you can imagine the amount of information that comes through my, myself and Dave Kennedy's heads. But I wanted to just give you an overview of what I've, what I've seen from two thousand ten until now, and then give you some idea on, I guess, just how we evolved, of how, what I've seen since March of two thousand twenty. So when March of two thousand twenty came and I heard that the city was considering this, I actually took a breath of fresh air. It had been a huge struggle working with LHA, and to also give you a sign that I worked with Boulder County Housing Authority, but obviously, that's not, it's not as close, cuz this is our city housing authority, right? So I took a breath of fresh air when I, I've heard this was going on. I really stayed, I stayed distant because I didn't want anything that I knew or, or thought kind of, you know, be involved at all, because it, it was my experience and my, I guess, perception of how the Housing Authority could improve. And, and I was never asked, really, that question. It was never asked directly. So this is, this is a, it really happened organically, I already had relationships with our city staff. And when Harold asked me to be a part of this team, I jumped up or, and with like open arms because of the issues that LHA has had in the past. So when they came through in March of two thousand twenty, we only had two certified properties, and that was the suites. And then Aspen Meadow Neighborhood, not the senior facility. So they only wanted those two properties in the program. Our program is, I mean, it's open to senior properties, it's open to any, anywhere that needed rent. We have duplexes in our program. But that was a choice that their staff made, it was offered to them many times. And so when new staff realizes, wow, why are our senior housing properties in the program? I said, well, we are, we're welcoming you, let's, let's go. So they have sensed, we only had two certified, which also means they've done what we call Crime Prevention or Environmental Design inspections and community meetings every other year. And we have, it's as much as they'd want, we have properties that want community meetings twice a year, right? But at the time, they land two. Now we have five that are certified, we're still waiting for the Hearthstone and the Lodge to become certified for them to do a few conditions as far as people's, some interior stuff. Almost all of LHA staff now have attended our training and have an understanding of the concept of the program and how beneficial it can be for not only the staff, but most of residents, right, in our community. And, and I would say before, before that, it was really pulling teeth for other staff to come. We've sent several maintenance folks to our training, which, to be quite honest, they're the eyes and ears of their properties. They see a lot. And we're able to provide them with some information or education on things to look for to report to not only law enforcement, but to property management. So that has definitely improved. And I'd say due to this partnership, and I wouldn't even say city, because of city staff, it was the want and the need, but they have an understanding of all their resources available, that the understanding of when to call court. Our managers, your property managers are wonderful, and they, they understand, well, what kind of issue am I having right now? Do I need to call court when I call dispatch? What am I asking for? So we've really worked really hard to get them real, to where they are now. And I'll be able to talk about that with some data, data that I ran. Prior to this, LHA was hesitant to call the police, and it reflects in some of our calls for service. And, and obviously, there are some things that happened that, that I don't really wanna talk about unless you have direct questions, I'm ready to talk about it. But it seemed like there was just a huge disconnect, and it was a, I, I basically threw out everything to gain that trust, and it was just kind of a closed door. So our, our calls for service, we wanna talk about that a little bit. They're pretty subjective, when you just run and see, oh, well, there's twenty-five extra patrols here, et cetera. I, I, when I got this information, I asked to take all the extra patrols out, all the, all the neighborhood walks out, so to speak, that we can, basically, all the proactive stuff, I took that out and used calls, just so you understand. And what I did is I ran calls for service from the suites and Aspen Meadow Neighborhood specifically, because that was a, in, in my opinion, in my experience, those are the highest call volumes and it's the most challenging communities that, that LHA have. And we have the most data on them, or Crime Free Program, because the senior communities were not in the program prior to two thousand twenty. So our calls for service for both properties from March of two thousand twenty until now, we've had a hundred and thirty-nine welfare checks for both properties in comparison to before, with data from seventeen to two thousand twenty, only eighty-three welfare checks. So that's an increase of about sixty-seven percent. And one would think, well, that's not very good. But if, if I were to, and I didn't get to dig to see who the caller was or what the circumstance was, but I'm willing to take a huge bet, if I was a betting lady, that a lot of that is due to staff, more staff calling in welfare checks. Staff is more on these properties than I've seen LHA have over the years, and they, they know what's going on with the residents. I can call Corinne at the suites and ask her like three questions, and she already knew the answer. I mean, that's just how, how involved they are. Another stat I thought would be important to point out is that, and, and I don't wanna bring up bin and vehicles of towing, but I'm going to. We had fifteen parking issues in the last, since the, since the city of Longmont took over LHA. And that was a sixty-seven percent increase from the time before. But what does that tell you? That tells you that management's not turning a blind eye to problems in their parking lots. So, and the other thing about our Crime Free Program that it's, Dr. Waters, you'll understand this, it's like, once you get that partnership and relationship built, we're telling people, call the police. So your calls are gonna go up initially, and then they're gonna drop. And that's what we've seen across the board in this program, across the community, but for certain in the LHA, these two properties here. And this is an, an interesting fact, too. Forty calls, since the city of Longmont took LHA over forty calls, what would mean back up. Three hundred and forty-two calls to this, from the suites, a hundred and four were from Aspen Meadow Neighborhood. The highest call total, forty calls came from the same apartment from the suites. Twenty-three from the same apartment at Aspen Meadow Neighborhood. So we could talk a lot about that, and I know I'm already giving the question, where is that, which part? At this point, I, I did not dig, but releasing that information, we also need to make sure that it's information that we can. that it's information that we can release if we don't, if we have to adapt, if we will. But I'm very willing to pull those, that information for you all in the records department to get that information because I found, I found that quite interesting. And then of the 446 calls for service listed since the city of Longmont has taken over LHA, 81 police reports. And then prior to that, we had 395 calls and 60 police reports. So any questions on, on the data that I just gave you? There's more here. I just kind of highlighted a few things.
Clarification on the apartments that were the urgent calls. Was that the resident of that apartment making the calls, or were the calls about that residence?
The ones I just highlighted? Both.
Okay.
And that's something that I can make more clear as well. So.
Chances are, we already probably know what, what's in play.
So my question, if it is the same resident making the same calls, is this, you probably can't answer this, but is this a mental problem with these people, or is there an actual crime being committed?
So I would say in, in these circumstances, there's more, more than involved in a crime. Or, and it could be a disturbance where no crime is committed, where you might have a neighbor-to-neighbor argument.
Okay.
There's a variety of things. But, you know, when you look at the suites versus As, versus Aspen Meadow Neighborhood, your community is so different.
Right.
You're, you're dealing, you know, you have some folks that have mental health issues at the suite versus you have many more families at Aspen Meadow. So I will make sure I dig through some of that for you to see more clearly, and we'll release whatever we can. So the other thing about sharing the data, and that's part of our Crime Free Program, is this partnership. And when we gave it to LHA before, this partnership now, we didn't know what they did with it. Myself and Dave Kennedy have had the opportunity, I would say, not that, you know, most, most law enforcement officers don't want to know anything about civil law, especially landlord tenant law. I pride myself, and I know Dave would be saying the same thing if he was here. I, I actually thought about going to be an attorney for, for this type of, of law because I'm fascinated by it, and I obviously decided not to. But I, I get to work in it every day, so I pride myself in knowing the, the law back and forth. And the info, I, I say that because the information I was providing, I never knew, and it wasn't, it's not our job to ask you. We give you the information, and you as a housing authority, you're a property owner, do with what, and that's the trust that we build, right? But we never saw any action. We kept seeing the problems. And I can tell you night and day difference. And they welcomed me, and I, I, I'm very glad to see that we are where we are with Longmont Housing Authority. I would say they've made significant efforts in improving the safety of their residents. They're doing a better checks and balances with prioritizing good of the whole versus the good of the individual. And that's part of my job, too. It's really hard to, we want to help that individual if they're having a hard time, we point them in the, in the right direction. But it comes to a certain point in, in property management where they have to say, wow, this is not, this is not okay. We have to move forward, and we have to start applying the notices as, as they need. I'm also partnering, partnering them with evictions now. Whereas before, I always offered it. I offered it to anyone. The county comes out, you have two deputies that respond, but when we have a problematic issue, it's probably, evictions are probably one of those dangerous things that law enforcement go to. And the Civil Division of the county, they're, they're rock stars. But when they come here, they, last week, we had one, and they were like, oh, I'm so glad you guys are here. They were, the last eviction was problematic people. They had left right before we got there, and they said they were coming back. So we just stayed the whole time. But my point being is that we're being, we're able to work together on that now as far as before. I never knew when they were having an eviction. And it's really good for our patrol officers to know that, too. And it was just never communicated. And I know, maybe Harold, if you want to speak to the, the community reactions? Because I know Lisa was going to talk about that, but.
Yeah, so I think when Sarah talks about the individual versus the community, you all received some notifications about communities whenever having issues. I think it's probably one of the hardest things we have to go through is because you also know what the impact is when you have to make that decision to go, we're going to court. And, but the reality is, you know, we also have to look at the community itself. And I think for us, it was really interesting. So I was getting briefed last Friday, and we were having to, to move through a couple of evictions. And the, and I'm not going to say the location, but the residents were literally outside, providing water to the maintenance staff that were moving stuff, providing them food, really there to support them because it was that significant of an issue in terms of the livability of their, their home. And, and I, and we wanted to talk a little bit about that because I think a lot of times when you get into this, you hear one side of the story. And it's like, well, doing this to, to me, you know, I've used the example that it's not that much different when we have to disempower an employee in an organization or, I didn't do this to you. We've given you these chances, we've tried to give you this help, and you chose to do this. And so we're, we're at the last resort because we have to ensure the health, safety and welfare of everyone that lives in that unit. And, you know, I think, I mean, there was a point where Lisa was literally in court every Friday when we talked about this. I think we're kind of getting through this. You know, God love our maintenance staff. And, and what, you know, I have the bill, I participated in one, the stuff that they have to deal with. We had to buy PIVAC suits and respirators.
PPE stuff.
And PPE for our maintenance staff in terms of what they're moving. You, you know, it's, it's not anything that you would wish on anyone to do. But it's an issue we need to deal with because we have to protect others that live in the maintenance. As part of this, feedback coming in, we did the CBG funds. We're now going to have cameras in all the properties. So we're now going to be able to put cameras in all the properties. I think we're talking about blending project NOLA that we're talking about for the city to also blend it for open areas so that we can see this. Because, I mean, that's just, that's a safety issue. And, you know, most of us, I'm pretty sure most of us in our free time drives through every one of these properties. I try to make a point, I live near a lot. And so I try to make a point every evening or whenever I leave, I'm driving through the parking lots. I'm seeing, I'm calling stuff in and bothering Sarah and Lisa sometimes really late at night. It's so I don't forget it. But, you know, we have an issue where we had to go through a process. Individual wasn't living in their unit, was actually living in a parking lot. When we finally got access to the unit, you couldn't move in. There was so much stuff. And, you know, and sometimes we have to have issues where, you know, we had an individual that was having significant medical issues, needed treatment. We tried talking to Adult Protective Services, you know, we tried court, lead, all of these things, and.
APS?
Pardon?
APS?
Yeah, adult, yeah. And just couldn't get anything to go. And there were significant medical issues. And we knew, we had to do something because it was a significant disturbance to, to everyone in the facility. We finally had to make the decision to say, we have to go down this road of eviction. The individual had been at a treatment one day. And, and so at the end of the day, it was an exhausting process. And we still had to go through these, but maybe we made a difference in someone's life and that they finally saw this as sort of that last ditch effort where you have to get medical treatment. Because we knew the medical issues were driving the behavior issues. So it's a.
And if you don't mind, I'll make one more point. Doing this as long as I have, I've had the honor of seeing some not great things. I've seen some wonderful, beautiful things. But one, one thing that this housing world has rendered in the last five years is a lot of change in state bills, a lot of what property owners can and can't do, and what they, who they can and can't rent to. I, we've had to come very far in, as far as who can they, they, they're doing their background screening, but a lot of times we find the backgrounds that are being done are not valid. They're not, they're not getting the information they need. So like every property, they have the ability, like, we want, like, if you have, we, we know you're doing your homework, you're doing your background. We know the issues, and I won't go down that rabbit hole right now because there's a ton of them and I'm very familiar with them. But we offer to every person that works in our program, we know you're doing your homework. And if you need, although this person up in our local, we'll, we'll do anything we can to give you a full picture of this person because a lot of times they don't. And we've done a very good job in, in I think, building our relationship and the fact that Sarah says, or law enforcement says that this person hasn't, it's not going to be a good thing, not going to be a good thing. We end up running, and this isn't just LHA, this is across the board. And it's, a lot of it's their housing. I, I know all the whys. I know all the whys. So they, they have to go down this path because they do, they're put in a circumstance for this person to apply to live there. Yet we had knowledge before, but still, we can't play that back and forth game. They're doing what they legally need to do. I'm doing what I morally and ethically need to do. And unfortunately, there's been some circumstances, it's going to be costing some money. But I know at the end of the day that I can like sleep well knowing that I told property owners and management, especially LHA and in the city, with what they're, they're taking on. They get the full picture from us. So, and it's, that's, I think that's one of the toughest things in, in their job personally, is that we have all these folks that are applying, and they're on the list, and truly filtering through and finding the right, the right families. And, you know, another property in town, she just got one of these really problematic folks out. And the community is like, oh, my gosh. And I, I can tell you, like Harold alluded to the fact that you're very close. We're, we're real close, closer than you've ever been, that I, in my, from my perception of being in a, in a good place. So. Any, any questions for me? I know I kind of just threw much out there. This was fascinating.
Not only that, I think it underlined and made, brought what Harold's been telling us in, in the group, the team, kind of brought it all together as to, I'm very, very happy to hear about you're all working together in the partnership that you have. It's very impressive.
I'm just curious, I have one question. So what is the eviction process? Not the three day, the two day, I mean, like, when you're getting ready to evic. What, what is that process? Maintenance go in, do you call? So the sheriff department come in and stand there and you watch? Okay, that's what I was.
Yeah, so obviously, we have to go through the legal, we have to go to court. I want to kind of talk about that a little bit because that's its own anomaly because they're not all the same. So some people will get a 30-day time period to, based on mediation and what that looks like and its severity, others don't. We actually learned our lesson on the first one that we did because we didn't do a lockout order. Yeah, so it created a whole other set of issues in that a lockout order basically goes, you can lock them out of the unit, you can post it, you can do this, and then you can move as needed. We didn't have to, and so that's the one where we were all literally moving stuff to try to get out. So you go through that, so it looks different. But when it actually comes to it, the Civil Division of, of the Sheriff's Department, they show up, they issue the eviction notice. We do tend to, more times than not, have Sarah and David and, or like the last one, they were both there because we knew there was an opportunity for conflict, and there was conflict.
That had to trespassing from.
There was like running up and down the parking lot and the cars, all sorts, you know. So we knew it was there, so we tend to be focused on what the danger is and what we're dealing with. And then we just got, they got, and then they move it, and we have to move it into a public space. And it has to stay there for three hours. They have the ability to go get their stuff. And, and then we dispose of it. Now, like the one that I participated in, I ended up interacting with the individual's brother. And it's like, here's his stuff, here's where we put it, if you want, go get it, here's what you can do. You know, you can come and find him. I think we helped him find his brother. And, and so it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a sterile process in when you're dealing with this. And, and at the end of the day, we still care, I mean, we still care about these individuals because I think the difference is for us is because we're both the city and we're both the housing authority. We also know we're going to deal with the individuals in one form or another. And so we try to go that extra step in some of these processes. Did that answer your question?
And all of them get to that point. Some of them will, you know, in court, they come up with compromises and will, will.
Those are the best ones. And you can elogiate.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that report. Sure. Thank you for having us.
Thanks, Sarah. So in terms of other updates, Molly and I had a really good conversation with the HUD Regional Director. A great conversation was actually the Deputy Regional Director.
Field Office Director.
The State Field Office Director for HUD. We were able to have some conversations regarding processes and procedures. Yeah, so I think there'll be more to come out of this. They're going to be doing, so these are new staff members, they're going to be doing the Oregon Colorado tour in October. So they're going to try to do it. We think we actually have it set where they mentioned maybe doing a day trip to Longmont in September. So we can meet with them and work through a lot of the questions and issues that we have, have had. So a really good hour with them. They gave us some information that we didn't know about, that we're digging, and they're going to provide us some more information regarding the history of the housing authority and what we're looking at. But I think, almost your name?
Mercedes.
Mercedes was definitely excited to see that the city had stepped in and, and this role and really doing what we're doing.
Moving on to the H, we'll see what this report. You, you will see an increase mainly because of a lot of the legal evictions, a lot of the meth units that those costs transferred to the tenants. I just sent a, I had some, but I, I reached out to, to some collection agencies. They just got back to me, we have about 20 accounts totaling about $63,000. That will be sent to collections there, and we'll be giving you a hope to see what that was like. And then we'll start the process for those, to see where they're at in the process, if they've received their first tenant or something like that type of thing. That's mainly a lot of it. We have past due plus some, we have some credits reflected, but that's because they've received rental assistance for a number of months, as well as just still diving into some of those old ledgers that look, that are like a puzzle. It's like putting a puzzle together. And, and some of it is we're missing half payments from the Longmont Housing Authority to these properties. And they just didn't get posted to the tenants' ledger. But we can see that the payments went out. So it's finding those, now they're getting those squared away. So do you guys have any questions on the day on it?
So I did want to add, so the collections pieces, so we do have a responsibility for HUD in this world, too, that if, if we know that there's issues, we track them down, we send them to collections. We do this, I think what Tracy said is whatever's collected, 50% goes to HUD, 50% goes to us. Is that just vouchers or is that for?
That's just vouchers.
That's just vouchers. There have been times based on criminal issues, so misreporting income and things like that, where we have had to. where we have had to reverse and folks to the FBI and the Office of Inspector General. And so those are just the responsibilities and we have to ensure that we're doing what we need to do as an EGM in HUD in this world exactly.
Yeah, and you won't see that on these reports. What he's talking about is, um, what they're finding on the HCP side is people are misreporting their income. Um, and so finding that as we do their background checks and their, um, they have to do a repayment plan. Um, you know, so they've had, I think, one had eight thousand, the other had seven dollars.
Twelve thousand. So I've got a series of meetings set up with individuals, when you might be next week or so.
So, um, and, um, when's, when an account goes to collections, do you have an approximate recovery rate? Uh, I know half goes to HUD and half goes to the authority, but.
Not on this, I think this all was us, right?
They pay us. Yeah, so this is a, this is a.
Well, what was the difference then, as you do say that?
HCPs have to have the voucher.
Yeah, so when, if you find fraud and you work out a repayment plan for those individuals to pay back, for everything they pay back, fifty percent goes back into the HCP program. So it goes back into, has HCP dollars to voucher program. And then fifty percent is, um, admin.
Right, but, um, my original question was, what are your collection losses? In other words, yeah, so you, you send a hundred thousand dollars to collections and they collect twenty-two thousand dollars, you know?
We don't have any data because they were, and they took collections.
Oh.
We're just learning through this.
Yes.
So that's why we did a big write-off at the end of this last year because we know there's such old balances out there. We're not collected, we weren't sent whether, so they weren't, you know, they weren't notified. Um, and it just, like to find those would probably take more time and effort than it would have been to write them off. So we did a kind of a clean slate type of thing. But now that, they can start doing the evictions and they're evading and fighting problems in the units and damages. The, the AR is increasing and now we will start in that collection process and have that data. Yes.
Is the, when it's an HBC, uh, when somebody owes because they misreported their income, that they've got a voucher. And so we collect and when they repay, half stays with us half. Is that an incentive from the, from HUD's perspective to encourage us to follow up and collect?
I think so. Um, I think that's just part of us doing our due diligence, um, to make sure that people are reporting the correct information. And so they actually sign an HCP contract, a repayment plan, um, that has language for them to pay, repay back. Otherwise they go default and then it goes to higher ups.
When did you all find that, you know, is that during recertification or?
Yeah, and a lot of what was happening is they just weren't doing background checks. They weren't doing that, the, the EIB follow-up to make sure that, you know, what's showing up on EIB? Do we have those documents? Yeah.
But what happened when you bought it? Oh, the compliance, you all have compliance, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Yeah, that's the difference, right? When you have someone in compliance, they come in and check all of your, you know, after you certify someone, they come in to make sure everything matches up. So now that you all have.
So we do have something.
Right now.
Yeah.
And the point is gamut, right? So you just have some people that you can see was just elapsed, you know, they just, oh, I didn't do this. For some that it's like very clear what's been happening and not reporting other people's income because living in the house. And you can see it. And so those are the ones that we tend to very quickly pick up the phone and, you know, first it was, you know, Zach who we talked to and then now we know OIG, depending on the nature of the issue. And so it's really a gamut of what we see in this and so we don't immediately go there. We try to work with folks and do it and else we just see overt fraud.
And a lot of the times, if they don't have, if they lose income, they're, they're in right away, just trying to go and readjust it. But if they gain income, a lot of times sometimes they wait till their recertification. And then when they recertify, it's finding, oh, you've had this job for like six months. So, you know, it's going backwards.
And so, you know, and this, I think the hard part is, because we had this conversation, I think I had it with one of you and they go, you know, the conversation was, well, why are we seeing these issues? What's going on? Because we're providing housing in some way. And I think that's the thing, we had to really reconcile is we have a lot of people waiting for housing. And we have a lot of people that do it right and we have issues that don't do it correctly. And, and so, yeah, that's why we're, we're on these things. Because we have a lot of people that need housing that will do it the way they need to do it. And, um, there's an equity issue for those that need it and don't have it, those that are basically. And, and for us, I think that's something that we had to kind of get our heads wrapped around.
So moving on to the financials, there really hasn't been any changes since Harold's last report about, you know, where we're over budget. Snowing in the world, we got the janitorial issue, we were trying to hire without an house. We're not getting any hits on that. Um, we've now moved it into the cities. So it was, it was being done outside like the old LHA process. So that's now been moved into the city's website and the city.
Yeah, yeah.
So to recruit those positions, we're still trying to get security for the suites. We're only having the security for the suites right now. So just the same situations in the financials happening, there's, there's really no changes. And I, I don't, do, so we've been talking, we didn't know if you guys like seeing these on a monthly or prefer seeing it on a quarterly? Because quarterly you would have more changes than on a monthly basis. And so I was curious if that was something you would want to look at instead or, or you still want to see?
I think that the, the most often we generally give reports as, as council members is quarterly. Uh, and I think that'd be more prudent than monthly and especially in this circumstance. So no, more than quarterly and even possibly further out than that, depending on material changes, I would say.
Yeah, I would say, um, quarterly if there's no major variance. But if there is a real exceptional condition, we'd want to hear about it sooner.
Okay.
Okay.
So when I have the moment, like, oh, what just happened?
We'd like to know about that one. Suzie, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay. Just checking.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I have thaws all over my face. I look like I was rolled over by a truck. I feel like I was rolled over by a truck. So sound like. I feel that eyes pack over my eyes, so I, but I can hear you fine.
Okay, so your ears are working, your eyes and nose, you're having a problem. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Is there something else that you'd like to see on the financial reports?
For me, I think financial reports have been great. And, uh, your verbal explanations of them are even better. So I don't see anything that needs to be done differently, other than accordingly. And as Marsha has said, the variances of something comes up. Did anybody, okay, so we're good?
So moving to vacancy report, we're all set. So the, um, I'm covering for Lisa tonight. So overall, um, this data is as of July first. So if you recall, we report one month afterwards. Ninety-five percent overall occupancy that is up from May, I'm going to say ninety-five, I was looking at the other word. June occupancy is ninety-five percent up from ninety-four percent in May. Um, we had, as of last report that you got, we had six units down for meth contamination. This is now four, since we have two that were, um, they just needed the specialized cleaning. Then they were released on July eleventh. So we've got four of those, two have cleaning bids, um, getting signed right now. And then two are reconstruction, one at the neighborhood and one of the suites that we've been talking about for a little while. And, um, the one at the suites is expected to be complete with reconstruction in August. And the one at the neighborhood is expected to be complete in September. Other than that, for, for typical vacancies, uh, the maintenance staff, we've been up to speed on hiring and, and filling those positions. So, um, they're, they're able to turn around vacancies much quicker. So of all the vacant units that are not down from meth, they are working off of the waitlist to fill them as quickly as they can.
Any questions on that report?
Just, I do. If you take the meth events out of the equation, because it, there's a, there's going to be so terrible. And I realize there are circumstances, not meth, but circumstances that, that make the sum more complex than I ever seen. But for, for the vacancies that occur that aren't, that are kind of straightforward, for whatever reason, other than I guess somebody passes away and maybe that's a complex part because you don't have any master. But people are moving to a different, they're moving closer to kids, they're moving out. Do we have a metric, uh, that we use to, to, to evaluate or to measure?
Let me confirm the exact number of days for you, but Lisa has definitely been working on, um, setting a goal timeline to have people have the, um, the unit turned and ready to go, assuming no extenuating circumstances. I don't remember the exact number of days off the top of my head.
And what they've just started, so our system wasn't reporting those days because they weren't using the work order, um, section of our software to initiate the unit. Like the unit's ready to turn so that you actually might, you have that data of how long it took the unit to return. And if we have maintenance staff down and stuff like that. So I know they did just get all the training, maintenance staff got all the training. They've got it on their phones, um, to do the mobile, mobile maintenance. Um, so they'll be able to report that and be able to get the data. Um, we do have the data of like when it, when it was first vacant, how long it's been vacant. Um, but we don't, I know there's specific rules for actual, like the unit turns needs to happen and the number of days.
Yeah, I wish Lisa were here because she had.
When there are non-extenuating circumstances, it would be nice to know as part of this report, what our performance looks like. Kind of the follow-on would be a property manager who's killing in terms of lining people up and getting these, these room, these units and these stuff when there's non-extenuating circumstances. Uh, is there an incentive for that? Do, do we have big thing anywhere?
I would say.
Compensation incentive?
Yeah. Or, or, or any, whether it's compensation or any other kind of recognition.
Recognition.
That would be kind of hard though.
Yeah.
That would be really hard, wouldn't you think? I mean, I don't know, I think that's a really, really good idea, but that's hard if you, if one property have less maintenance and, and, and to turn over those properties and sometimes you have the center maintenance purpose, person over there to help with that particular property.
Or member populations.
And the, right, right. So I think it does depend, but that's a really good idea for compensation, but.
Well, you could generate a criteria extending circumstances, you know, if anyone wanted to check, here's the checklist. Anyways exists, a loan, and then there's an exception. But when not loaned or checked, um, I don't know. And it, there seems to me that there's some missing piece in terms of accountability on the one hand and recognition on the other. When you've got a property manager who's on it. And this would be you want to catch people who's up right, not catching who's up wrong.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could we get like employee in a month type of thing with some kind of, uh, compensation, not necessarily monetary?
I can, we can.
Can we move into our pay for performance piece?
We'll need to check. I did ask, because I'm getting, I'm prepping up for the budget. I did ask Lisa if she wanted me to add cushionary money outside of the salary for those one-time bonuses or one-time, you know, because I know a lot of the staff have been, you know, we've been understaffed, we've been, you know, moving all over the place. If, I know we just hired a maintenance tech that, that has more experience, he may get a lower, like so. That's definitely some of the conversations I'm having, having. Uh, but I don't know if we're under, I would assume we, we clear ourselves up with that, but.
That's what we did. Let us get back to you.
Well, this is the one area where the performance of a, of a property manager translates into revenue, right? To help us meet our, our financial objectives as an organization. And I, for us to not be recognizing it in some way when people are doing, performing at an exceptional level is simply a missed opportunity.
Yeah.
I know Lisa's also talked about like the collection piece of it. You know, when they, when they come to that collection piece, if, if property managers actually the one getting the payments and, and getting the payment plan is, is to, to, like getting incentive back to them. Because they're, we don't have to send it to the collection agency. It's the, the collection agency is that property manager and they're, and they're doing it, so.
And inspections. Inspections are very important. To get the score and your property get a good score, a high score, uh, that's a good incentive too.
Yeah, and I think you have a point on the different properties, it's interesting because we kind of talked about our problem properties. So you may have to kind of normalize for what's really good performance in a property, like that's giving you a lot of fits. Because it is going to be different than a property that's not as problematic.
Not a good culture.
And that's what I was thinking of that, um, would it be competition? And, you know, to get that compensation? And would some property managers always be no doubt because of the type of properties that they're having? In, in some ways, I think it could be a little discouraging that some company managers would never be able to reach that.
I think you can normalize, I mean, we kind of went through that on the city side. That was a question on pay for performance on the city side is, are certain people not able to do this?
Right.
And what we've said is, no, anyone's able, but here's a criteria, here's what you have to look at. And that's our city, we may, we may have to normalize it. So if we have a property that has in, in our number of meth events.
Exactly.
You may have to normalize for that and go, you know, the percentage we're going to judge you on is the traditional turns that you have to go through, taking the outliers out of it. And so we'll talk to, to Lisa on that one.
I mean, to say, I'd never want to work for an organization that's, that established a standard. No matter how good I did, no matter how well I performed, no matter how I contributed to the bottom line, I'm never going to do better than the guy next to me or the person next to me, performs in a very different way, just saying.
Yeah.
Well, the other, the other thing here is evictions. You know, you told us about the apartment that you couldn't even get into it.
Right.
That's going to take longer to turn around. Could be, I don't know, but.
So one thing I know that, that Lisa has really brought to that, to her team, the property management, maintenance teams, is when they need a job done, they all come together, they all show up and do it together. On particularly bad turn, for example, unit turn. So I think that it's the, uh, exceptional pay, the things the cities make sense because we also have an assistant property manager and however they play the role in the leasing. And I would say that, that the team has such good camaraderie, when they need to all come together, they do. Um, they show up for the big evictions, they show up for the bad unit turns that, um, let's definitely, I think, I definitely hear the message that incentives, and especially if you're offering on a, you know, percent filling, that is a different model than some other city departments in terms of how to get income.
We try to do it, this is one.
Well, I mean, it's different and, you know, so when you look at compensation and things like that, if we look at what the city's doing, you know, we take the approach that, you know, if you're doing your job and you're doing it well, and what we did in marketing, that's how much, that's what you get. If you're doing it really well, then we can do exceptional pay up to five percent beyond what the midpoint is. And the reason why we did that is because of the issue of if you have a high performer or someone else and they're both making the same. What we really started seeing is a lot of discontentment in our high performers because they're going to us going, and this doesn't make sense. And, and so it's how you balance those issues out and everyone has an opportunity to do it. But, yeah, we'll have to dig into this one.
Just one, I'm sorry, when I was in HUD, and that was a long time ago, in the housing authority, and I know so much has changed. But we got incentives from paperwork, making sure that we did collect the amount of money that we need to collect. Made sure that the recertifications were, um, up to par. Because when we got audited, and of course we get our internal audits, and so when the internal audits came back, and we had a lot of errors, of course, of course, that went against the managers. And so, um, then the assistant managers, because we work together to make sure that those certifications are, um, are accurate. Make sure you both do your reports and all of that. So we got incentives for making sure all our paperwork was done because then you wouldn't have to, um, go back and cash for your money back because you did it correctly the first time. And so that's something, I mean, that's what we did. And so that's something, I mean, that's what we did, I don't know if that's relevant, if that could happen today, but I know that's how we did it. It was all about the paperwork and so essentially we have a compliance officer person, they can come in and do a preliminary pre-audit. And then that also helps those managers too, to figure out what they're not doing right and then give them that support. But then those who are rocking it, then those are the ones who really get those incentives.
Yeah, we'll definitely work with them.
Sounds good.